My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's Bowling Green City Council meeting. We're certainly glad to have people here and interested in local issues. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollandbaugh?
Here.
Jeffers?
Here.
Robinette?
Here.
Roland?
Zanfordino?
Here.
The minutes from the August-April 1st meeting have been distributed, and we've had a chance to read them. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me, I should have asked for any corrections there. Seeing none, we can proceed with approval.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Kay, do we have correspondence?
Yes, the only thing I have this evening was distributed to you prior to the meeting of financial budget summary reports for the month of February and March of 2019. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Tonight Mayor Edwards is away, and Council President Mike Osbacher is acting mayor. So Mr. Osbacher, do you have special recognition?
I do. Thank you, Bruce. It is my distinct pleasure this evening to present a proclamation from the office of the mayor recognizing the sixth anniversary of Not in Our Town in Bowling Green. I see Emily Dunne Pace, Representative of NIOT, is with us this evening. Would you like to come up, please, Emily? Of course, please do, yes. Thank you so much. So I'm not going to read all of the whereas and how for's, because there are many of them, but I would like to highlight just a couple of the words and phrases in this proclamation, because I do think it's very important. I think it's important that we note that this is the sixth year of Not in Our Town in Bowling Green, and that the city is dedicated and committed to continuing to support the efforts of Not in Our Town to promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity, and bring our community together to combat hatred and prejudice. Certainly, recent events indicate that there is certainly work yet to be done, and we are all committing ourselves to that through this proclamation. I believe that the work that has been done by NIOT in our community is certainly valuable as we make an effort to celebrate multiculturalism in our community and diversity, and also make clearly that when we encounter instances of bias and hate and discrimination in our community, that we feel called upon to take action and to continually reaffirm our community commitment to celebrating our differences and stand up against bigotry. So again, in light of recent events, I think this is most timely, and I just want to say thank you to all of the work that you've done on behalf of all of the members of NIOT and the other community partners that have been a strong participation or participants in this process as well. Certainly, our Human Relations Commission, La Conexión, Bowling Green State University have all been active and participated, and I think it's very important that we celebrate the work and recognize that we're committed to continue to work together with all of our community partners to continue the work. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Osbacher, and thank you, Ms. Dunne Pace, and we appreciate your efforts.
At this time, we're going to proceed to lobby visitation. We see that quite a few people have signed up to speak, and that's fantastic. We would ask that you try to limit your comments to three to five minutes, and Kay will be kind of watching the time a little bit. If you get up to five minutes and she signals you, that is her role in this process. So first on the agenda, I know, is Beatriz Maya with La Conexión.
Thank you for giving us the time today to present to you the recommendations coming from the two community discussions organized by La Conexión following the March 31st, 2019 racist attack on two young Latinos at the Waffle House in Bowling Green. The incident deeply affected and rightly outraged the Bowling Green community. The two community gatherings that we organized serve the purpose of reflecting on what happened and discussing potential solutions and proactive responses to prevent this type of incident from happening again. We would like to thank the BG City Police for its effective and quick response to the attack. We also appreciate the strong statements of condemnation issued by Mayor Edwards and city leaders. Finally, we thank members of city council for their participation and input during the community discussions. Over the years, Bowling Green has taken a clear stand against discrimination and hate. In 2017, the city adopted a welcome city model and began to take steps towards becoming a safe and inclusive community for all of its residents. A volunteer task force was established and worked for a year to formulate recommendations that were delivered to the mayor and city council, who now owns this initiative in June of 2018. The recommendations reveal that due to the aging of the population and demographic reality of the city, to secure the vitality of the community in the years ahead, we need to attract and retain a younger and more diverse population. This is in line with the target demographics in the city's master plan. What this means is that we will need to identify and address the barriers to support this diverse population, not only to live here, but also to thrive in this city. Incidents of racist hate have increased nationwide, and this national climate is requiring a faster and more energetic response to make progress towards the city-adopted framework of a welcoming, safe, and inclusive community. This hate crime that just happened here is giving BG an opportunity to further its leadership role by exploring any additional unnecessary action steps to take in making progress towards the welcome city-adopted framework. For this, it is imperative that the city works together with the community at large, with those affected, and with the university to effectively develop appropriate solutions and proactive measures to prevent any further incidents of this sort. We should highlight here in appreciation that BGSU President Rogers did attend the discussions and committed his full support. I will present only three of the recommendations that came out of the discussion, and other colleagues will follow. These recommendations are provided not as full answers to the issue, but as steps to explore moving forward. One, there was consensus among community attendees that the first step to take is to acknowledge that racism does indeed exist in our community and to work towards increasing awareness. We have made strides to do better, but there is a long road ahead to where we should be as a community. We must recognize this is a systemic problem that goes beyond punishment to individual perpetrators, and we must continuously commit to the work to ensure progress. This is an opportunity to open dialogue. The issue should be widely discussed and debated. Some of the suggestions included discussion at board meetings, and I have participated recently regarding the issue of plastic bags. This is an effective way to increase awareness and to discuss solutions.
Excuse me, five minutes is up.
Oh.
Let's do this. Beatriz, I know that you speak for a lot of people. Other people have things to add, and maybe other people can just be a little brief and maybe not repeat things too much, but I do want you to continue and want to hear the rest of your thoughts.
Okay, I'll be faster. Second, we suggest city council to explore the possibility of enacting an ordinance requiring local businesses and institutions to adopt and execute zero-tolerance anti-racist policies. Suggested provisions include, but are not limited to: A) Requiring patrons to leave immediately upon the first racist insult or action against other patrons. With failure to comply resulting in immediately calling the police, as these incidents usually escalate and move from insult to injury in seconds. B) Ensuring that employees are properly trained to identify and respond to incidents involving hate. Recommending good practices in businesses to make them safe, welcoming, and inclusive. D) Supplying compliant businesses with the recently adopted Welcome City Logo decals, identifying them as safe, welcoming, and inclusive places. E) In addition, educational models, modules, I'm sorry, should be developed and offered to businesses, retail, manufacturing industry, and other institutions on identifying and stopping both overt and subler forms of racism and other forms of bigotry and prejudice. Third and final recommendation I will address. Many of the suggestions presented by the public call for the formation of task forces, rapid-response teams, and other structures to attack this issue swiftly and diligently. We do feel, however, that the city has already taken the first step towards this goal. The Welcome BG Initiative can act as an umbrella to activate other existing structures to fill what is perceived by the community as a vacuum. For this to happen, we suggest the Welcome BG Task Force recommendations should be fully implemented and properly funded. The recommendations report should be made available to city residents and widely disseminated. The report calls for the formation of a steering committee and for the hiring of a coordinator to identify and address the many dimensions that comprise a truly welcoming community. Finally, the report identifies leads and partners to address potential barriers, including the City Human Relations Commission, county commissioners, the university, community organizations, industry, and others. These parties should be brought together and activated towards the goal of building a welcoming, safe, and inclusive community for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Beatriz. I appreciate those remarks. Just as a matter of housekeeping, I would ask folks, as you come forward, to state your name and address. And Kay, who is next on the list?
Sylvia Chandler.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Chandler. My address is 540 Wallace Avenue, Bowling Green. And as a part of the committee that is addressing the racist issues, the situation that happened at Waffle House, I wanted to express my deep concern and hope that the committee would take seriously the recommendations that are coming out of the committee discussion. I feel very deeply that the need for training for the staff, not only at Waffle House, but those types of restaurants, be something that we enact and implement as a way of defending and saying that zero tolerance and intolerance won't be tolerated. It's something to say that we have to deal with racist situations. My similar story is that I was also in a restaurant and had folks next to me, younger people, that were swearing, and as we addressed them and just asked them to change their tone and keep it down a little bit, had a response that was very threatening to me and to have that sort of sense of insecurity, not knowing how that person, as they verbally attacked us for asking them to change their language so that we didn't have to hear that, then we had to take it to the staff, the waitstaff, to ask them to deal with the situation for us. But having that fear of that situation, I can almost imagine what these two young patrons of the restaurant had to deal with because they had to ask to be moved. No one stood for them to say at the first opportunity that something was amiss, that somebody should have said to the perpetrators, "We won't tolerate that here. We don't need that type of business, and we won't allow not only the two young men, but the other staff of the establishment to have to deal with that kind of environment." And we need to have something in place that says, "We can come in and sit down, people of color can come in and sit down and not have to worry because the staff has the training." They know that on first impact, that they need to address the situation and handle it from there so that the patron isn't also having this victimization and then not knowing how to handle the situation themselves. And I have to really acknowledge the two young men for having the wherewithal, not to retaliate, but to ask to be moved, and then still end up being beaten up based on having been attacked. So just that dualism of having to deal with both situations, from a victim of not having someone stand in their corner and say, "We won't have that, and we're going to protect you," they're having to protect themselves and deal with the situation, and then try and decide what is best to do. You know, they made a really good decision for that, but still ended up being victimized. So wanted to just speak to that issue, that we address that in a way that the training of the staff, they maybe didn't have an understanding of that they should do something, but when you're the victim, you want people to come to your rescue or to at least say, "Wow, geez, you know, we don't do that here." Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 1067 Carroll Road. Janet Parks and I are both with La Conexión, the Immigrant Solidarity Committee, and we're going to talk about training and education. I first want to make a comment that President Rogers attended the first meeting. We had excellent participation by city council members, and it is greatly appreciated. One of the first tasks we thought to do was to gather information, and that would include obtaining hate crime statistics and incident reports for BGSU and Bowling Green over a period of years, so we could see what type of incidents occur and what is the scope of those crimes. And they also may be not just crimes, but acts of racism and bigotry and prejudice that cause concern at institutions. We'd like to meet with, we thought that Chief Hetrick would be a good person to interpret the incident data from BGSU. BGSU incidents, they have an online reporting system, and so you can actually read the incidents online on their webpage. The second area was to acquire information from the BG City Schools. Incidents such as this are not uncommon at any level, at any age, or in any place. We thought that the BG City Schools would know of areas of concern that they have witnessed and would be able to provide some information. There are other public establishments, I think, have information. They have seen these incidents in their establishments, and they know what to look for and what we need to do to prevent some kinds of non-emergency incidents that may occur. And I want to make it clear that the focus should not just be on hate crimes, but other forms of racism and harassment and bias toward others. Little tiny cuts can cause just as much damage as a felonious assault. The other part with this is after we gathered information to organize discussions and training for business sectors, and that has been mentioned. We had business owners, people in human relations, that understand that bars and restaurants and retail businesses, 24/7 businesses, are kind of unique sectors, and they all have unique situations and problems that they face. And we thought it would best to get these people together, including experts in law enforcement, experts from BGSU, state officials, et cetera. Put those people together and help. They can solve their problems that they see unique in their institutions. One of the factors was that we saw there's problems of racism and violence in bars and at night also among employees or people, there are instances of discrimination and harassment against persons of color, and that should be addressed. The other part is that businesses have training for how to deal with difficult customers or certain situations. The question is, do they provide some bystander training for manager and employees to prevent or reduce the impact of inappropriate behavior? Third part is that the training can also be very positive in terms of how to create a positive and inclusive environment, so when an incident does occur, somebody in that, one of the employees may say, "That's not how we do it here." That's kind of employee harassment that occurs. The final thing is that, I found this today, we had talked about adding training for workplace harassment. And you may remember the incident at the Toledo GM plant. You're probably familiar with that. I read today that the Ohio Attorney General's Office immediately offered training to the GM plant, and GM quickly accepted it. So there are state resources that are available for this community. Working together, I think we can make this community a better place for all persons, and the La Conexión is willing to lead and assist in any need.
Janet Parks.
Thank you. My name is Janet Parks. I live at 810 Sharon Street here in Bowling Green. And I'm going to pick up on where Linda left off, but first I just want to thank council again. Many of you will remember last September, they changed the preamble to the city charter a little bit to include the statement that Bowling Green... Am I not using my Jim voice? Okay, I'm all right with that. Anyway, this addition to the preamble of the city charter indicated that Bowling Green is determined to be a welcoming, inclusive community with adherence to practices of nondiscrimination as established by law. And I think the activities of NIOT and the welcoming group and La Conexión can all lead to making that more of a reality maybe than it is today, but live up to our potential. Now Linda was talking about these wonderful ideas that will help us become more aware and less racist, and then you bring it down to a pragmatic or a practical level, and we've talked about conducting workshops and training on identifying and stopping the more subtle forms of racism, prejudice, and harassment. These can include subtleties such as biased language or symbols or cultural symbols that may not on their face seem inflammatory, but in practice are, depending on how the viewer receives that information. Also, she mentioned bystander training. I think this would be wonderful, because so many times we want to help and we don't know how to help, and if we actually got training and helping in how to recognize the sign that something is about to happen or could happen, and then take some action as redirecting attention. We've done that with our children for years. You redirect their attention, and that can be real important in a situation like this. We can hold regular community-wide active training sessions that could be planned by law enforcement, by BGSU, and other community partners on how to respond to hate incidents. They could be offered in places of business, organizations, churches, and other community institutions, because we want to reach people who might not voluntarily attend workshops designed to help us learn about these types of things. They could also be held in public spaces as well. They could extend beyond the city limits and be shared with surrounding communities as well as the county. For example, Perrysburg recently had a racial incident, and they're planning how to address racism in that community. La Conexión has organized a Northwest Ohio Immigrant Rights Network, and they could share their work in Bowling Green. Bowling Green has a potential to be the leader in this area. And the last thing I want to mention is training for the vulnerable communities. We could organize and offer training to help people in those communities understand how to escape, de-escalate, or survive an attack until the police arrive. Thank you.
Carrie F. Jane?
Susanna Peña.
Thank you for your time this evening, City Council. My name is Susanna Peña. My address is 938 Manitoba Drive. I'm a resident of Bowling Green, a member of La Conexión, and I had the pleasure of attending the two community meetings organized the past two weeks to discuss these initiatives. I'm continuing our summary of the sort of major findings of those meetings. One point we wanted to raise is that we recognize the important work done by existing structures of the city and of the university, including Not in Our Town, the Human Relations Committee, and the Welcome BG Committee. As we discuss sort of new ideas for initiatives, those of us who've been involved in those different efforts recognize that we were kind of hearing things that had been discussed previously, some that had been executed previously. And we are really looking to the city and the city council specifically for your leadership, because we recognize that for this to make sustained, effective change, we need more resources committed to these actions, and we need leadership in terms of coordination of these actions. So we're looking to you to help us take it to the next level. We also recognize two challenges, again, that those of us who've been on these initiatives can see. One is, how do we reach a wider audience? We've been very effective in organizing programming that has had quite good attendance, but often it's the same attendance from event to event. So we appreciate that support, but we recognize that in order to make effective change, we need to reach people who are not coming to the diversity events month after month. So how do we reach a wider audience? Second, as this incident in particular indicates, it's not only BG residents that involved in setting the climate for our community. So how do we address all the people who come through Bowling Green? Those who reside here, but also those who work here and don't live here, those who come here on the weekends only, those who come for recreation. All those folks affect the climate of people and residents of Bowling Green. So how can we design programs that will address this diverse community that makes our community so wonderful, right? So many people want to come here. So some of the ideas that the group came up with was to work with existing community-wide events that reach this diverse audience. We've talked about things like the Black Swamp Arts Festival, Firefly Nights, and Art Walk, to find a way that we can work our message very visibly into those events. So we've done the handout the NIOT cards at Black Swamp before, but how can we do kind of a more powerful reception of the message so that all the people who come to these wonderful events think of Bowling Green and anti-racism initiatives together? Another idea that came up from the group was working with United Way to decorate their storefront with effective graphics to deliver our message. And finally, an issue that was raised before, the idea of kind of... And finally, an issue that was raised before, the idea of kind of branding businesses who commit to the zero tolerance policy, and who commit to engaging in a training and maybe retraining their new employees to the zero tolerance policy with the Welcome BG stickers, decals on their doors. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Carla Davis McGowan. I'm a community, my address is 810 North Christopher, Bowling Green, Ohio. I am a community member, as well as a member of five different social organizations and two child welfare agencies. I have quite a few of them contacting me at times, asking me what's happening in my town. My sole reason for being here tonight is to support the two young boys who were attacked. As a member of the community, I want to be assured that this does not happen to my family and friends. In fact, that this will not happen to no one else in BG. Back in 1983, when I first arrived on BG SU campus, my father said on a visit, "Wow, baby, it's like Mayberry. You don't need the police." No disrespect. He bragged to his family about this town that he loaned his baby to, because he felt this was a great place to live. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I stand here today to support whatever efforts to ensure that another incident like this will not, will be handled in a different manner. At a meeting last night, when I shared that I thought the Waffle House staff needed training, I was asked a question, "Do you think the Waffle House was at fault?" I said, "No. The fault lies on the two perpetrators." Today, I feel different. Yes, the fault lies with the two perpetrators, but definitely some accountability must rest with the Waffle House. There was also a question I had, that was asked last night, was, was the Waffle House contacted? I contacted them today and found that Tyler Smith is the manager. His cell number is 419-366-4887. I invited him to a Jane Elliott, for those teachers who are in the room, they know who Jane Elliott is. There's an event that will occur on 4/29. I left them flyers for it. I was informed, I cannot say that these are facts, that we lost two possible BG SU students because those boys were considering BG SU as college and BG as their home. I was also told that the how to respond to this type of incident was posted on the door. The staff went to get it, but they couldn't find it. Today, I'm requesting that the Waffle House require their staff to receive training on handling these types of situations. Furthermore, I think the other businesses should be offered and encouraged the same type of training, if they don't have one in place. Waffle House must take the same responsibility that the famous coffee house did. They had nationwide training for all of their locations. My father would be proud to know that I live in a town that was voted a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla, Mr. Acting President. Seeing some people motioning that they can't hear, I know Lori's trying to address it, but is that how we get the feedback?
Okay. Try to use that microphone. Who do we have next, Kay?
Christina Yaniga. I'm sorry if I mispronounced names. Members of council, I will only take a moment of your time. Allow me to introduce myself. I am not a BG resident. I am a councilwoman from the village of Pemberville. And I have been keeping pace with these events and paying very close attention to them. By the way, I really like the fact that you guys have public comment at the beginning of your meeting. It's an excellent idea. I think I'm going to bring that back with me. I would like to thank you for all you do for this community, both seen and unseen, on a smaller measure. I understand that. I would also like to thank La Conexión, Ms. Maya, and the Immigrant Solidarity Committee. The impact of your work is felt as far as Pemberville, and I very much thank you for what you do for my community. When I, when I pay attention to what has been going on, I can't help but notice what people have already drawn attention to. The fact that the people who perpetrated the crime were from outside BG coming in. They're from smaller communities outside, communities like mine. And I'm also hearing from the people that have brought suggestions forward that maybe we need to include people outside of BG in this conversation. As an official, this begs the question in my mind, maybe the interplay between Bowling Green and the smaller municipalities around it bears more attention. And as a representative and a member of one of those, I'm paying attention, I'm listening, and I'm watching as to how this is playing out and the, the community response, and I'm taking that back with me, and I'm having conversations with my constituents, with my fellow officials. So I'd encourage you, I mean, speaking from the official side of the table, things that I would have if someone was bringing this to me, is how does this get practically implemented so that these great larger ideas don't die out when the enthusiasm wanes? But how does this keep going? Because questions are going to come from business owners. When I have the responsibilities of schedules and bills to pay and people to put on staff, how am I going to take time away from all of, that I have going on in order to do this? And I think those are valid questions. And as an official, if I'm bringing these ideas to my community, I want to know how I can work as a partner with them, not to put something else additional on them to make life harder, but to treat it as this is an incredibly valuable component to the culture of our community. So how can we partner with you to remove those impediments? What can we do on our end and meet you halfway in order to see how this can, this can work? So my, my ears are perked, my attention is here. If you involve smaller communities in this discussion, if La Conexión wants to invite the smaller communities into this, I can only speak for myself as one member of the village of Pemberville's council, but I would be more than happy to liaison and to facilitate that conversation. So I wanted to come and make that known.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, members of council, President Osbacher, and members of the audience. My name is Emily Dunapes. I am the community co-chair for Not in Our Town. I'm also a Bowling Green resident. I'm going to ask if you wouldn't mind indulge me just a moment to change the subject, although what we're talking about is hugely important, so I don't want to take away from the importance of the conversation. But I also had already in mind to take advantage of this opportunity tonight, because this happens to be the week of the anniversary of Not in Our Town. Thursday, April 17th, 2013, it might not have been a Thursday, but this Thursday, April 17th, is the actual sixth anniversary of Not in Our Town. And so I wanted to take a moment and share a message from Not in Our Town to the community and to the council. And first of all, I'd like to begin by thanking you, and thanking the mayor, and members of council, and the Bowling Green Police Department for your ongoing support of Not in Our Town, Bowling Green. Your support has been unwavering, and it is very much appreciated as we continue our efforts to guide and support and inspire all of us to work together to stop hate and to build a safe and inclusive community for everyone, for all. I will also mention to council members and to the mayor and to members of our community, it was so wonderful to see so many of you at our most recent event, which was the Interfaith Breakfast. What an amazing event that was, if you had a chance to attend. More importantly, it was, it's, it needs to be noted that it was the outcome, the success of that event was the outcome of the incredible leadership and collaboration of members of our community, both the city of Bowling Green and also Bowling Green State University. We have some of our leadership group is in the audience here tonight, so they did an incredible job and created an amazing event. And as a result of their efforts and their work and the participation and attendance from the community, we were able to share with the audience a video that expressed the heartfelt reality of people who practice a variety of faiths here in Bowling Green. And also, we were able to begin a dialogue about their own personal experiences with their faiths here in Bowling Green, which is a hugely important step, very necessary, and it was a good step. I also want to be able to highlight some of the upcoming events that we have planned for Not in Our Town. As I mentioned earlier, our anniversary celebration, well, our anniversary is this week, but the celebration itself will be next week. It's going to be happening on Thursday, April 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Wood County Public Library in the meeting room. We encourage everybody to attend. You're certainly all welcome to attend. I just also want to make a quick note of, if you haven't had a chance to be in downtown in the Four Corners, we have our NIOT banners flying proudly in the Four Corners there to remind everybody of the celebration itself. But we want, more importantly, want people to attend, to have a chance to get together, to chat with our friends and our neighbors, and meet new friends and neighbors, which is really truly the foundation of creating an inclusive community. It's all of us talking. It's all of us getting to know each other just a little bit better. It's all of us taking an opportunity to meet someone new. Maybe you've seen them before in town, but you never really had a chance to meet them. That's what we want this event to be about, and we truly are welcoming everybody to attend. We're also going to take some time to reflect on past events of Not in Our Town, things that we have completed, initiatives that have happened, and the things that we've supported. And we also want to hear from you, how you, your thoughts about what, how you'd like NIOT's future to look, what our future endeavors might be. At 5:30, we will have remarks from President Rogers and also the mayor, Mayor Edwards. And guests are free to come and go as, you know, throughout the evening as you would like. And we're serving cake and ice cream too, so, you know, that's worth it just in itself. But we hope to see you all there. I do have some flyers that I'll leave, have those available for anybody that would like to take them with, with you. Secondly, another upcoming event we have is the Community Dinner and Dialogue, and that is happening on Sunday, April 28th, from 5:30 to 7:30, albeit St. Marsh Lutheran Church, continuing that recognition and that idea that we really truly believe, our, our group, our committee, the importance of dialogue, getting together and talking about events, talking about things that are happening, because that collective energy and that collective intelligence from people in our community, your experiences, that's how we come across solutions. And each one of you have something to contribute to this dialogue on the topic of the opioid crisis. This is an event that is sponsored by Bowling Green State University, Not in Our Town, also a Welcome BG Committee. It was a result of a MAC grant, a Mid-American Conference grant, and the goal of the grants themselves are to create a more collaborative environment between the city and the university that resides in that city. So we're very excited to present this topic. And again, we hope that you will attend, join us for that evening. And again, it's an opportunity for us to work together to address this issue that affects all of us. Dinner will be provided. It is a free event, but reservations are required, so please make sure that you get your reservation. And again, I brought flyers. The link to reserve your spot is at the bottom of the page, so please, we'd love to see you there.
Excuse me.
Yes.
The five minutes is up. It's way over.
Five minutes? Holy mackerel.
It's actually been six.
That goes fast, doesn't it?
Thank you, Emily. If you could just leave some information with us.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The next person is Bud Hension. He's gone? Okay. Okay. Can I speak to him? We still have more.
Let's let the other folks go.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? Wonderful. My name is Maddie Stumpf, and I live at 724 North Enterprise. I'm also going to shift gears just a little bit. Again, don't want to diminish the importance of this conversation, but want to share with council and the community a couple of events that are coming up, held by a group of students at BG SU regarding the plastic bag initiative that's going on. On Sunday, April 28th, is Community Earth Day, so we will be at that event hosting a reusable bag making workshop. So if you're there, come visit our table. We'll have information about how to make your own bag, and then a little bit of educational material about what we can do as community members to push forward this initiative, while it's still in, in the process. And then Tuesday, May 7th, from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Grounds for Thought, we're hosting an event as well. That'll be a bag making workshop. It'll be come and go as community members want. We will be providing t-shirts, so the t-shirt, it will be a no-sow making event, so it's, it's really super fun and easy, so good for people of all ages. Bring your kids, bring your, your family. It'll be, again, we'll have some educational materials, and then that'll be an opportunity for community members to see that they don't need to go out necessarily and buy a reusable bag to go without plastic bags, that they can make one out of a shirt that they have lying in the drawer at home, because we likely all have old shirts lying in our drawers at home. So just want to share that information to you. We have flyers coming out, so when we have those finished, we will send, we'll email them all to you. But wanted to give you a heads up because I know that one, at least one of them is before the next time the council meets. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Maddie.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Buff, and I'm at 859 Walnut in Perrysburg. Thank you for letting me have just a few moments this evening. I also work at the university, and I'm really here as a resident of Perrysburg. We had our first forum last week. About 120 people came out, who are all very concerned about what's happening here in BG and what happened recently in our town as well. I'm here tonight to learn from all of you. You are leading the way on this. You're very much leading the way on this. All of you in the room that I've been fortunate enough to cross paths with because I've been showing up, you're leading the way, and I'm so grateful for your insights, your work, sharing, being generous. Showing up at our event last week was really, really important to so many of us. So thank you for leading the way. I'm very much watching what you're doing. I'm not here in an official capacity representing Perrysburg, other than as a resident. So thank you. I hope that this is an opportunity for us, as the councilwoman from Pemberville also suggested, that this is an opportunity for us to work together. So I will very much, I have a whole notebook full of notes, but thank you, thank you, thank you for leading the way.
Thank you, Colleen.
Hi, my name is Connor Goodpastor, and I live at 221 Leroy Avenue. I got two things, I'll keep them really quick. The first thing is I was able to make only one of the meetings with La Conexión, but I just wanted to state support for their initiatives. They have outlined a strategy, both long-term and short-term, which something like this requires us to look both what we can do immediately, but two, what kind of things we can do to address these problems going forward. address these problems going forward. Dealing with issues of hatred and racism doesn't happen overnight. It's going to take a lot of coordination between one city council, to the schools, and the community, because we have to reach people early. If we don't reach kids early, we may lose them with these, to these sort of ideologies. The second thing is unrelated to that, I think it's not very often that an international issue comes up to a local city council. I'm sure many of you have heard about the arrest of one of our old students, Amin Aldris. He was arrested in Saudi Arabia, and we've had a change in leadership there, and as Mohammed bin Salman has consolidated power, we had the issues with Jamal Khashoggi, but also now the arrest of 11, 11 people as they fought for women's equality in Saudi Arabia, and one of those was our own. I only had the pleasure of meeting Amin a couple of times, but he was an incredibly articulate and intelligent person. There's a group of us that are going out, trying to reach out to local representatives, or state representatives, to our national representatives, trying to get some sort of statement made. It's incredibly difficult with our national climate, and as the current administration kind of buddies up with the MBS regime, what we're asking for is public help. Anybody that can help us reach out, help us reach out to Lada, help us reach out to Portman, help us reach out to even, even our state representatives. If city councils are able to make some sort of, some sort of declaration, your guys' voice carries a lot more than five, six, seven of us, so any help we can get would be greatly appreciated. I'm working with the Hubble Stably family, who've kind of led the way on this issue, I'm sure you heard about them, with the BG Independent News article that came out not too long ago, but any help we can get is greatly appreciated. We just, we need statements, we need people moving, we need action, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen.
Hello, my name is Joe DeBar, I'm the co-chair of the Wood County Green Party, I live at 517 South Main Street here in Bowling Green. And my apologies if this isn't terribly articulate, I have a touch of the flu that seems to be going around to everybody in Bowling Green right now, but it's hard not to be sickened when you're confronted with an act of violence like this one. And I, just a few points, the Wood County Green Party is in full support of the suggestions that La Conexión has made. Also, it needs to be pointed out that the alleged perpetrator, one of the alleged perpetrators went to high school here in Bowling Green, so this is not just a out in the further reaches of the county problem, this is a problem we need to face here in BG as well. As far as suggestions, I would just like the council to consider the idea that if the victims of this attack still have any medical bills, that the city might step forward to represent us as a community, to, we can at least, we can't stop the physical injury, but we might be able to help them with the financial insult that getting treated for these injuries had. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. Emily, with regard to speaking for Bud Hench, and I don't think that sounds like a very good idea, if you could see me after the meeting? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, well, a lot of times we just go right on with the meeting after lobby visitation, but I do have a couple of thoughts that I, most of what I would want to say has already been said. Several of us have been working with La Conexión and the Welcome BG Initiative for a couple of years, so I'm not going to repeat all of that. It's, it's slow-going, racism didn't start here, we won't end it all. We, we have good initiatives, we've been, the Welcome BG Task Force really started after we witnessed some changes in national tone in terms of immigration policy, and we were very concerned as a community how it would affect us. We held some rallies, we tried to think what practical things could we do, we passed an anti-Islamophobia resolution, and then we passed a welcoming resolution that we just felt needed to be followed up with some action. So the, the task force was created, we spent most of our time initially following the lead of Global Detroit, Welcome Toledo-Lucas County, Welcome Dayton, in which the suggestion was that we look for the win-win situation, which was to find ways to connect employers who were short of workers, and to connect them with a diverse population of potential employees, including immigrants. So that's what we focused on. And I think the incident at the Waffle House has, has made us very aware that it's not just about jobs. And we have a lot of things that you have all described very well, and you brought some new ideas, and we'll have to take them, we will take them all very seriously and think how we want to proceed. So the only thing I want to say from my prepared comments is as, as one of the leaders involved, I realize how some of our statements are inadequate when acts of hatred and violence occur. People that feel vulnerable on a continuing basis are not encouraged by us saying things like hateful speech and actions do not represent us as a community. Because Bowling Green does include people who allow themselves to walk a path of hate, ignorance, intimidation, and sometimes overt violence. I acknowledge that we have not transformed Bowling Green into a perfect place, our work And at this time, I will suggest that this would be the appropriate time for other council members to make any comments you, you wish on this topic before we move on with the rest of our agenda.
Mr. Acting President? Thank you for the prepared remarks, I think those were excellent. Bruce, you know, there's been a lot said tonight, and there's a lot to think about, and a lot to, you know, try to process and see how we do go forward. You know, my commitment to the people that are here is, I'm going to try to meet with as many of you as I can, one-on-one, as a citizen and a council member, to keep this alive, and I'm sure my peers feel the same way. You know, there's work to be done, it's, you know, I don't, you know, pretend to think that this, because the perpetrators were from out of town, that this is not a local issue. Racism exists everywhere, certainly in our country. So, you know, I just want to say thanks again, and I'll be, I'll be reaching out to those of you who I know. You know, I think we do good things, and I think there's more work to be done. You know, one thing I looked up once, there's like 100 NIAOTS in America, which is amazing to me. When I first looked it up, I thought there could be 15,000, frankly, but there's 100. So, you know, we are doing some really on-the-edge things, and NIAOT, of course, is a wonderful way to, to be, to work on these issues. Yeah, I also found it was really comforting when, when I read about the Perrysburg Forum, that they're considering forming a NIAOT. So, you know, I think we are doing, we're taking steps, but not only this incident, but just the reality of, of our, of our country suggests there is a lot more to be done, and I'm certainly willing to, I want to commit to being part of trying to address that.
I would like to thank everyone who spoke tonight, and I did notice some reoccurring themes along the lines of what Bruce said. There are people within our community that have values that don't represent the majority of us. One of the perpetrators of this act is a former student of mine, and was in my government I understand the desire to reach out, to educate, I also feel the sting when that's inadequate. Thank you.
Mr. President? I too just want to thank everyone for, for the comments tonight, I found them very insightful, and I'm proud of Bowling Green. I mean, as the folks from Perrysburg have noted, not only tonight, but in the paper, they're taking Bowling Green's lead, all these community-based organizations, and I think that's the key, the one word, "community." These community-based solutions are what's going to solve this problem moving forward. And for my colleagues on council, I'd like to let you know that, as many of you already know, I serve on the Business Council on the Chamber. We happen to be meeting tomorrow morning for a monthly meeting, and on that agenda is the discussion of this very issue, and what role, if any, the Chamber should and ought to take. And I'm looking forward to a very fruitful discussion there, to engage the Chamber of Commerce and all of its various members in this conversation as well, and that's going to occur tomorrow morning. So that'll start the conversation within the Chamber of Commerce, specifically in the Business Council. So I think we're moving forward on a lot of fronts.
Thank you, Greg.
Director President?
Yes, sir.
I also would like to thank you all for coming. Bowling Green City Council, you probably don't know this, but Bowling Green City Council meetings are not necessarily the most popular place to be on the first and third Mondays of every month. Somehow, other people feel that there's other things that they should be doing. So it's particularly impressive that you're here tonight. And I'm somebody that tries to concentrate on solutions, and there were quite a few very good, very thought, well-thought-out ideas that were given tonight and at the other La Conexión meetings. That, that is great. And I would like you all to feel encouraged, it's hard to at this point, but feel encouraged that the track record of Bowling Green City Councils, present council, previous councils, in the last at least decade, has been one of steady, innovative progress. We've done things, it's been acknowledged by people outside Bowling Green, we've done things to move things forward. We've had anti-discrimination ordinances, we've got a very strong commitment to Not in Our Town, just ask Heather Saylor, and the mayor, we've got the Human Relations Commission, we have the various resolutions that have been passed, Bruce mentioned a few of them. So this is something that is constantly before us, and we, we move forward on it. Does that mean that we can say, okay, we're done? It's the type of issue that will never be done. But the encouragement I'd like you to take from this is, A, as was mentioned earlier, we do listen, B, we have acted, and that gives confidence, I think, that based on A and B, C, we will continue to do that. And we work best as a council when we get input from others. There's a saying that I like to use, Woodrow Wilson, and he said, "I not only use my brains, but all that I can borrow." And so, it's the type of thing where continually come, hopefully, the continued engagement with us is something that doesn't just happen when there's a horrible thing that happens. But continue to press us, we already have the momentum to go forward, and you've given us fuel by your presence, as well as by the very good suggestions you've given us. So thank you very much.
If I might, Bruce, I also wanted to thank everybody for attending this evening and sharing your thoughts. It's heartening for me to see so many people here willing to participate in the, in the dialogue. It's clear that this is a community problem that's going to require a community solution. So the fact that we're all here this evening, committing ourselves to the ongoing process of, of confronting these issues within our community, that certainly are not unique to Bowling Green, we've, we've seen this, I think says a lot about our community, and I'm pleased to stand with members of City Council, Mayor Edwards, I know is committed to the process as well, and all of our administration, to commit ourselves to continuing to directly confront these issues and determine what it is that we can do to continue to make progress on these very important discussions. Thank you certainly to the members of La Conexión that were here this evening, I believe that they made some very timely and well-informed, well-considered recommendations, that we will take all of those under consideration and determine ways moving forward. I did want to report in regards to the discussion of training processes that could potentially take place in our, in our community, that just last week, in response to this incident, I had an opportunity to meet with our public administrator, Lori Tredder, and our police chief, Chief Hetrick, and discuss ways that we could engage with people in the community to talk about mitigation efforts, among, among other educational focuses. And one of the things that we discussed is a, a current process that is currently in place, that is offered by the Bowling Green Police Division, that they call LEET Training. LEET Training stands for Liquor Establishment Education Training, and this is a free training process that is offered by the Bowling Green Police Department for local businesses and its employees. The purpose of the training is to mitigate alcohol abuse and violence. One of the things that we are discussing and are proposing is that we expand this training to include information for those operating in overnight establishments, including businesses that don't have liquor licenses, or restaurants, or wherever it is that people may congregate in the late evening hours. So, and I heard also, you know, the suggestion that we might consider extending this training to members of our community, and, and engage with potential bystanders, and also vulnerable communities within our community. I think certainly that those are ideas that we should give consideration to, but I did want to report that BGPD is currently working on a process that would allow them to extend this existing training program out into the community in an effort to engage with employees that might be confronted by these issues in the late night hours. So I think that this is something that we can expect to be hearing further details from, either from Lori's office, most likely from Lori's office, I would say, on behalf of the BGPD. And I think that this is a very good initial response, and I'm pleased that this is something that we can do in the right now, and I think could have an immediate impact. So I just did want to report that that's a process that is being discussed, and would suggest that we would hear more about that in the, in the very near future.
Thank you, Mr. Osbacher. So, we're about to move into the routine part of our meeting, introduction of legislation and so forth, and, and you're welcome to stay. I hope you all stay, but if you want to go, we won't be offended. But we are going to continue with our regular business. So it is time now for the introduction of new legislation.
All right. Mr. President?
Mr. Robinett?
I have an ordinance from the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee amending and adopting Section 151.45D of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding streets and sidewalks.
Thank you, and I'll pass that on down.
You were watching.
Mr. Acting President?
Mr. Harold?
On behalf of the Public Utilities Committee, I have an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to apply for a loan and execute an agreement with the Ohio EPA, Ohio Water Development Authority, for water pollution control loan fund, funding for the design, equipment, and construction of the Aeration and Biosolids Improvement Project at the Water Pollution Control Facility, and declaring an emergency, and I might add, that's why all of you are staying here, so we could talk about the legislation about Water Development Authority for Water Pollution Control Loan Fund, Funding. Aeration, Biosolids Improvement.
And from the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. With that, we are ready for official reports. Acting Mayor Osbacher. Acting Mayor Osbacher.
Mr. Jeffers. Has been noted, Mayor and Mrs. Edwards are on a well-deserved vacation. I really don't have a report from the mayor's office, other than to assure you the business of the city will continue to be conducted in the mayor's absence. Certainly, our capable city employees will continue doing all the things that they do every day to provide tremendous services for our residents. That's all I have this evening. Wish you all well. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Osbacher?
I have one. Is this a sample of the brevity that may be in the future?
I will -- we'll take that under consideration. I'm not going to commit myself to a course of action at this point.
Municipal Administrator Treter?
Currently, the city of Bowling Green is conducting a fair housing study. It's known as the Analysis of Impediments of Fair Housing Choice. And this enables the city, as a community block grant recipient, to in part affirmatively further fair housing, which is prescribed by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The goals of this study are to identify whether barriers to fair housing choice exist locally in the rental and real estate markets, as well as the mortgage lending, insurance and appraisal industries. Further, the study examines private and public policies and practices that could intentionally or inadvertently lead to housing discrimination. The process includes solicitation of opinions from persons involved in the housing industry, including renters and homeowners. So if anybody living within the city limits of Bowling Green is invited to take part in this survey, and it really would be a valuable exercise for folks to take a few moments to share some anonymous, answer some questions anonymously, it takes less than 10 minutes to complete. And the survey is available in both English and Spanish. It is available online. You can go to the city's website to connect to the survey. You may also call our Grants Department should you want a copy in paper, if you'd rather do that than online, and that is 419-354-6203. Also wanted to note for you that the Bicycle Safety Commission is currently seeking nominations for the 19th Annual Bicycle Spokesperson of the Year. It's presented to a nominee who best exemplifies the spirit of bicycling through involvement in bicycling, bicycle safety or bicycle-related activities here in Bowling Green. So please turn those nominations in by May 1. We also try very hard to keep folks up to date on a lot of information, and we have a very active social media posting. We have information that is available through a weekly newsletter. But for more immediate concerns that are happening in the community, the city is working with the Wood County EMA and Wood County over all the other communities and rolling out a Code Red Community Alert System. Again, we have more information on our website, but Code Red provides persons with the ability to get notices about emergency situations, critical information about things going on in the city such as water boil advisories, snow emergencies or large-scale electrical outages. So there is an app that's available to folks. It's very easy to download and to get that information, and we can get that out quickly. The last thing I'll note is that there's a lot of construction going on in town. We've been talking about 2019 and our various construction projects for years. Again, we encourage you to get connected so that you can be planning your route through the day. And we just remind you that construction, although it's hard on folks, it does show investment in our community. And so we appreciate people's patience or kindness. Support your local businesses. When we close roads or we detour people, some, you know, sometimes unfortunately, that can have a very temporary effect. But again, as citizens, supportive citizens, make sure that, as always, that you're seeking out your local businesses. We do certainly appreciate that. That completes my report, subject to your questions.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Treter?
Thank you.
Lori, I just want to comment that the road construction is wearing on people, and I think people will appreciate it when it's all over. There's no way to convince people that it's great while it's happening, but thank you for your comments on that.
We know. Better days are ahead. We do promise that for the roads.
President?
Mr. Harold?
I have a suggestion that just came to mind, and usually the most prudent course of action is for me to not mention it. But perhaps at the end of the project, we could have a community gathering and have a sacrificial orange cone and just allow the community to take a whack at it just to celebrate the completion.
Thank you. Planning Director Saylor. No. Any questions for Mrs. Saylor? Thank you. Parks and Rec Director?
Any questions for either of these folks? City Attorney, Mr. Marsh?
This is not the -- this is not the first time that's happened.
Everything.
Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
Just real quick, every year we have to send out a Consumer Confidence Report. We call it the CCR, which is an annual update to the public, our water customers, about our water quality that we provided to them for the previous year. In past years, we've mailed an insert in the bills, and in most cases, people probably hopefully recycled that item, if they didn't look at it and read it and study it. But to try to be a little bit less wasteful on paper, EPA has allowed us to do an electronic notification. So we're going to try to do that this year. So there will be some information that will be put on the bills, notified to the public about where they can go get that data. The report also will be a little bit modified from previous years. We've had kind of a fold-out brochure. It'll be look more like a typical Word document, maybe almost like what the council packet would look like, because we're going to use Word to create that. So the information will still be there that was in previous years. It'll just be a little bit different layout, a little different format, and a little bit different way that customers can go access that data. All the past CCRs are on our website. This one will also be on our website. So hopefully, it's a new way we can start using to notify the public about our CCRs on an annual basis going forward. So that's all I have. Have questions?
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Mr. O'Connell? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our official reports. Are there any council committee reports?
Well, no report. I do have a quick, John, and for the bicycle safety, it occurred to me during the discussion of bicycles. Do we have a date to -- for the recommendations that are still out there from the Bicycle Safety Commission?
I contacted Steve Langendorf this week, last week, and he told me that the group is still working on prioritizing the streets, which is, of course, how we last left it. There is a meeting of the Bicycle Safety Commission tomorrow night. I'm going to be able to attend that, and I'm sure that'll be on the agenda to move that forward. But I think once, until the street prioritization is accomplished, I think we're on kind of hold to move forward. Thank you, Greg.
Okay. I think we are ready for the reading of the legislation.
Legislation for first reading. Ordinance number 8768 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019 and ending December 31, 2019. Ordinance number 8769 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 151.45D of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding streets and sidewalks. And I'll note that there is a public hearing scheduled for this on May 20 at 6:45 PM. Ordinance number 8770 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to apply for a loan and execute an agreement with the Ohio EPA, Ohio Water Development Authority, for water pollution control loan fund -- funding for the design, equipment and construction of the aeration and biosolids improvement project at the water pollution controls facility and declaring an emergency. Legislation for second reading. Ordinance number 8766 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to enter into an agreement with the Manchester Group, LLC, for a utility service line protection program. Ordinance number 8767 for second reading. Ordinance accepting a utility easement from the Village of Haskins. Legislation for third reading. Resolution number 3729 for third reading. Resolution to recognize and celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hollenbaum?
I move that we adopt Resolution 3729.
Second.
The resolution has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. Would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaum?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 3729 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8759 for third reading. Ordinance certifying unpaid cost of snow removal to the county auditor for placement on the tax duplicate.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 8759.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. Would you please call the roll?
Hollenbaum?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
The motion carried. Ordinance 8759 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8762 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing participation in the ODOT Road Salt contracts awarded in 2019 and declaring an emergency.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 8762.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. Would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaum?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 8762 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8763 for third reading. Ordinance provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $1,010,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of improving the city's park and recreation facilities by constructing, furnishing and equipping a new city park community building and including landscaping, paving an entry drive and parking lot and constructing a patio, together with necessary and incidental appurtenances and such other costs of those improvements as are permitted by revised code, Section 133.15, to be funded from the proceeds of securities and declaring an emergency.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 8763.
Second.
Good luck with that, Mark. Well, bill's fast. Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaum?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 8763 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8764 for third reading. Ordinance provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $890,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of acquiring real estate for city purposes and declaring an emergency.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 8764.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. Would you please call the roll?
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaum?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 8764 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8765 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate and authorizing the mayor and municipal administrator to complete the purchase of said properties in substantial accordance with the contract exhibits attached and authorizing the municipal administrator to request proposals for the sale of certain of said property not necessary for municipal purposes and authorizing the execution of all documents necessary to complete said acquisitions and sale by the mayor and/or municipal administrator.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 8765.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
President?
Mr. Harold?
Not only did it take quite a bit of effort by our esteemed clerk of counsel to read through the verbiage, but there's a lot of money involved and a lot of decisions with these last few ordinances. And I think it would be -- we'd be remiss without thanking the administration and all the people that have been steadfastly working to bring this about. And so thank you all.
These are all things that are necessary to keep our downtown moving forward, and I appreciate your comments. We do appreciate the hard work that went into this. Okay. Would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaum?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Zamfordino?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 8765 is adopted. Is there other business to come before council?
I would just like to make the announcement that the next Community Improvement Committee meeting with regard to single-use plastic bags will be held here at 6 o'clock on May 6.
Thank you, sir.
I ask, Mark, how many more meetings do you anticipate?
At least one.
How many additional meetings do you anticipate?
Maybe we'll wrap it up. That's very optimistic, but...
But to be careful what you wrap it up with, Don Mark. Mr. President?
Yes.
I want to commend you for stepping in. You have big shoes to fill to lead the council meeting. Council President Osbacher does a very fine job. You stepped in, and you've done good, Bruce.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd like to make a motion to excuse Sandy Rowland from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Acting President?
Yes.
I'd just like to say one more thing about Mark's comment and Greg's question. Mark is the chairperson regarding the plastic bag issue, and the -- at our next meeting, we want to start deliberating on what we'd like to propose to the full council. I know there are some students that are working on papers regarding the issue, though. So Mark and I spoke briefly after the last meeting about having approximately 15, 20 minutes more public comment and then rolling into deliberations. So it could conceivably be the last meeting, Greg.
Good to hear.
Now noticed Mr. Scroochy back there. Thanks for coming to our meeting tonight. We appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Did you second it? Oh, you were asking for it. Who seconded it, though?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Here's going to be every roll.